... To order Clay Township, please stand the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Forgive my hoarse voice. I feel good, I just can't talk. I know everyone's glad.
I brought my glasses.
So, roll call, please.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Absence excuse.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristy Hilton.
Here.
Chris O'Regan.
I'm here.
Cindy Valentine here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Bill's payable, I'll entertain a motion.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the bill's payable in the amount of $60,594.25.
Motion of support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey, oh, sorry, she's not here. Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next supervisor's report. Been doing a lot of work on the Sewer Interceptor Project, Wastewater Treatment Authority, Pearl Beach Pier, and Spark Grant Projects. Seems like they're all going to come to a head at once, probably, hopefully. I do have a meeting with all the people involved with the Wastewater Treatment Plan Authority and the county tomorrow, just on the steps on transferring titles over to the new authority once that's established. And, oh, we had, our pet blessing box is installed in the park. It was, labor was donated by Chris Emels, and the wood was donated by another system. And it's a spot where if someone's having down on their luck, having problems feeding their pet, there's dog and cat food there so they can take what they need. And other people can actually drop off food, which has been done since it's been put up. And if anyone wants to donate, they can drop food off, dog food, cat food, pet food, I should say, at the township office, and also Snoopy, Snoopy's Doghouse is doing that.
Hey, Artie, what about the blessing boxes?
Same thing.
Same donation spots?
Yeah.
Here or at the Snoopy's?
Yeah, here, I'm sure they'll take it there.
They can drop it here.
Oh, right. Or you can put it right in the box, too, which people do.
Okay. Thank you.
But they've been stocked pretty decently as of late. I know Algenack Rotary donated $500 to the cause not too long ago. So, it's been, I mean, I've been driving by there at least every other day, check it I was getting ready to, or I am getting ready to apply for the Spark Grant for our parks. And of course, you know, you're always looking to score more points. And part of that is accessibility to the physically and mentally challenged. And so I wanted to get, put, it's called a scoreboard, up in the park as part of the whole grant process. And these are for kids that are autistic or non-verbal kid people, how they can communicate with people. And they work pretty good. And so I asked Scoreboard and More, our local company, to give me a quote. Lo and behold, they just came, gave us a board. So that was nice, we did put it up. But I'd like to actually get a second one, because, you know, you gotta be near the board for it to work.
Who gave it us?
Scoreboards and More.
Oh, nice.
Yep. Chris Campbell and Sandy Kufel, thank you to them.
Okay.
I still want the quote, though, so I can attach it to our grant. Been doing a lot of research on other grant opportunities, mostly with Clean Water State Revolving Fund and the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. This past week, I attended two seminars with them, or meetings, you could say, and seeing if they'll apply to us. And DDA asked me to look at options for building pickleball courts, three courts in our park, which I have been doing. We're going to get a couple of options, drawings from Project Control. Remind everyone, if they're paying any bill with the township, you can round up, pay extra, do what you want, donate extra money, it goes directly to our Goodfellows. If you do mail it in, please put on the check memo or note that the extra goes to the Goodfellows. Did I say that right? And I did meet with local quilters this past week or so ago. It's a wild bunch of people, let me tell you. They want to start, it's called a quilting trail. And they have them all over the country, and this one would be all through St. Clair County, but it would start here in Clay Township. And they're outside, they're painted on wood. And it's pretty cool, you can go there, take a picture of it, or they have a little QB, what do they call those codes?
QR.
QR codes. And it'll pop up on your website, it'll tell you about the history of where you're at, like if we have one in Pearl Beach or here, tell you anything about the whole area. And they're really good tools for tourism. And they want to start it here in Clay and Algenack, and then go up the river all the way up to Port Huron. So, it's kind of a cool concept, and it's one of those things that's really hard to measure. Well, if they have a website, they'll be able to tell how many hits they get. But it's kind of a cool thing, and I told them we would help them out where we could. Actually, the Algenack Rotary donated $500 for them to get it going, and they're making an LLC and doing some other things to it, so that was kind of fun. And last thing, it kind of saddens my heart. I talked to my good friend Joanne Shirkey here, she's going to resign from our board in probably next week or two. So, at that point, we will have an opening. And I can't remember, once we accept the resignation...
We have 45 days.
How much?
Forty-five days to appoint.
Forty-five, we have 45 days to appoint someone. And so, in the past, when we had a vacancy on our board, what we did, we put a subcommittee of three on it first, and we collect resumes, and the whole board would get the resumes anyhow, but they would put thoughts together and come up with a recommendation, like between one, two, and three, and then it would come to the whole board for a final decision. But we're going to have to start thinking about that, forming a subcommittee, and also if anybody would like to apply. I did have one person reach out in writing to me, but if they want to send a resume and letter of interest to myself or the clerk, supervisor@claytownship.org, or the clerk at claytownship.org, and we'll start compiling people that are interested and take it from there. I'm sure we'll have more discussions on that going forward, but just wanted to let the board know and everybody else that Joanne intends to resign shortly. So, too bad, she's been part of this board or other boards on the planning commission zoning for over 40 years. So, yeah, we're gonna miss her, so just wanted to mention that. And that's all I have. Thank God it's not a long one. Public comments, and do we have any public comments? No public comments? Bill, you got a public comment? You really shouldn't wear that hat.
That's a great hat.
Bill Gray, Top 9200 North River Road. I'll take my hat off for Artie. No, I just haven't been here in a while, I do kind of miss coming around. The real reason I'm here tonight is because Artie was sitting next to me at the Clay Township, or at the Algenack City Meeting one day, and he was kind of, I won't say crying, but he was moaning a little bit, because nobody from Algenack ever comes over here. And so I got together with Artie, or with Artie, with Rocky and with Ed Carter, and the three of us were going to come tonight to kind of represent the city of Algenack, even though I don't live there, but I'm close. And both of them came up with some issues tonight. Rocky has a bad day at work and zoning night home with Mary, Ned had to babysit his grandson, so I'm here. But I wasn't going to say anything until Artie pressured me into it.
Is that all you have?
I know you can't engage, but if you want to, go ahead. If not, I'll put my hat on and leave.
Thanks, Artie.
Yep, no problem.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody, any other public comments? Hearing none. I'll move to the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the check reports, the minutes from the board meeting of 11:21:22, and communication regarding the past election from Jocelyn Benson.
Okay, we have a motion, any support or any discussion needed? Do I have support? Okay, hearing none, no discussion. All in favor of the consent agenda submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have our fire chief report.
Good evening, Fire Chiefs Report for November 2022. I attended one meeting in the month of November in St. Clair Flats Association. Both fireboats have been pulled out of the water. Fireboat one will be stored at the Harbor Club inside, and then boat two will be stored at the fire station. If we need to go to the Outer Islands before the ice hits, we can deploy fireboat two from the station, main station, or we can use the airboat. West Shore started to install the sirens on the island and on the mainland, so they should be up and running hopefully by the first of the year. The ceiling fan at the work bay at Station One needs to be replaced, I'll be getting some quotes on replacing that. Would like to advise the residents of the township to make sure their batteries, replace their batteries in their smoke detectors and their CO2 detectors, and also have their chimneys cleaned and fireplaces inspected for any cracks or anything. Reminder, Goodfellow applications, you can pick those up at the Clay Township office. And the food giveaway will be December 19th in the morning, we're working in partnership with Woodside Church, and the Christmas gift boxes will be handed out that night.
George, someone has a problem changing the batteries of the fire alarm, smoke detector, they can call us?
They can call us, and if they need...
We'll get on the ladder and do it if they're not comfortable.
And we do have extra 9-volt batteries.
Okay.
And if somebody needs a smoke detector, I do have some extra smoke detectors and CO2 detectors that we can...
Good to know.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions for George? Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chief. New business, first thing, we have a discussion of Burnham and Flowers with John Johnson over our workmen's comp insurance. Hey, John, how you doing?
Good evening, good, good to see you.
Good, you too.
Hello, everybody. So Cindy had asked me to come out and kind of explain the situation with the workers' comp insurance. For those of you that might recall, I was out here in June. We had presented our proposal for the property and liability insurance, which is currently through the PAR Plan, and we had intended on placing your workers' compensation insurance for the township through the, one of the carriers that we work with. Previously, you were with MML for a number of years, and so there's been some changes or some things that have happened since that meeting with the carrier and a few of the companies in Michigan, and so I wanted to kind of explain what occurred and answer any questions that you might have on what happened over the last few months. So, essentially, the way we are able to implement work comp insurance for municipalities is through what's called the Michigan Workers' Compensation Placement Facility. So it's a portal with a few different carriers that can receive those quotes. Basically, what happens is we receive a quote through that placement facility, which is a tentative figure, then we issue the policy, and at that point, the policy is sent to an actual carrier. So we don't know who the carrier is until it's issued, and then at that time, if there's any discrepancy in balances, oh, that's when we can send those invoices. What had occurred after the June and July term was that we received the initial quote through the placement facility. Once that policy was issued, it was issued through Liberty Mutual. Liberty Mutual, however, when they wrote the policy, it was written as what's called a Plan B policy. And Plan B is the term that the carriers use for insureds that were previously self-insured. And so although in the traditional sense, you were not self-insured historically, with the state, the placement facility, as well as a few different state departments, one of which is the Compensation Advisory Organization of Michigan, the CAOM, as well as the Compensation Agency Department of Labor, which is at the state as well, they classify the MML, the Michigan Municipal League, as a self-insured program. So as you may know and as we're familiar with, pooling is different, at least from our eyes, than a traditional self-insured township. And so what had happened over that course of a few months is myself and my manager, Steve Johnson, had been going back and forth with Liberty Mutual, as well as these other organizations, to try to explain to them that your previous policy through MML is not what we would consider self-insured, even though they label themselves as a self-insured pool. So just kind of, I guess, a difference in opinion there. Long story short, we weren't able to have them adjust that quote, and so the new figure had some additional surcharges that we initially did not anticipate, because again, you were placed as a Plan B policy. So kind of, long story short, after many conversations and phone calls and back and forth with all of these organizations, we weren't able to get you out of what's called that Plan B policy, and so the annual premium for the policy was much higher than what we had anticipated. So our recommendation was to actually go back to the MML, at least for this year, because they were about half the price of what your new policy would have been. And, you know, from our perspective, we would love to be your agent for that policy, but with the difference in price, after everything was said and done, I didn't feel comfortable suggesting that you stay with Liberty Mutual. Things will likely change in the future. We have a new partnership with AccraSure, where we're hopefully going to be having some new markets available to us in the future, but at this time, Liberty Mutual was our carrier that we were able to offer you, and like I mentioned, the price was much higher than we initially anticipated from that initial quote. Kind of went through that fairly quickly, and I know there's a lot of different terms in there, but wanted to, you know, kind of at least explain that as best I can, and then answer any questions you might have on what occurred over those conversations.
So what was the MML right now?
Correct, yes.
Essentially, they were going, Liberty Mutual was going to cancel us unless I sent them another $40,000 on top of the almost $50,000 I had already sent them.
Right.
So John and I had done some paperwork shuffling, he got in touch, back in touch with MML, and they worked great with him, and they just reinstated our policy there. Because I didn't feel that it warranted another $40,000.
Oh.
So it was like down to the day, trying to figure...
Yeah, do this on the fly.
Yeah. I think we had some extensive conversations on Fridays and Saturdays, and Monday morning it was hit the ground running, in fact, it was Saturday, hey, I need those, I need those documents as soon as you can send them to me. So we wanted to make sure there was not a lapse in coverage, because then we'd have different penalties from the state, so...
Right, right.
So the bottom line, our cost is the same as we paid last year, or do we know?
We don't know. It's based off of our payroll, I mean, the MML didn't change the rates from last year that I know of, if they have, I mean, it's, you know, it's whatever their rates are, but...
It's based off our payroll.
It should be very similar, other than the increase from the increase in payroll.
Increase in payroll, yeah, and I did have a few conversations with some of our contacts at MML. We used to actually be a representative for MML, so we still have a good relationship with them, and I think that's why they were able to get you reinstated so quickly. They really did a good job of making sure we avoided any lapse in coverage there. But they did mention, because you're reinstated and we're not rewriting a new policy with MML, you're still eligible for all of the continuing dividends and everything that previously you were eligible for as well, so you're not going to have any gap in dividend checks being sent back or anything like that, which was another, you know, question that we had. So I think MML did a really good job of getting it done quickly and also reinstating versus rewriting a policy. Like Cindy mentioned, we did avoid a lapse, which was the main concern.
Right, that was going to be my next question.
Yep, so there was no lapse in coverage between Liberty and MML. And at this point, the only additional work that we have to still coordinate with Liberty Mutual is to get you your refund. There will be some refund, I haven't been able to do the figures yet to figure out how much it'll be, but with the amount that you had paid prior to the cancellation of that policy, there is a balance owed back to the township, and so they will likely do an audit, although you were only with them for a few months, and because we know there were no claims during that time as well, I wouldn't anticipate, you know, them retaining any of those funds. It'll be a prorated refund, and I spoke with them actually yesterday, or Friday, and they mentioned that, Cindy, if you haven't already been contacted by their audit team, they're likely going to reach out to you in the next week or so, and then I can help kind of coordinate that audit to make sure we get you that refund as quickly as possible, so...
So, did we switch to Liberty to save money in the first place?
Yes.
And how much were we going to save?
I would have to look back to your previous MML.
It was like eight to $10,000.
Premium.
We had thought...
A year, for the year?
And that, yep, and that was the, again, that was the initial quote we had from the placement facility, so that was even before we knew it was going to be with Liberty. So it's kind of that unique situation where we get a tentative quote, and then once it goes to the carrier, that's when it got kicked over to Plan B. So initially, we did think there was going to be some savings, assuming that the initial quote we got was valid, but then once it got kicked over to Plan B, that's when that price almost doubled.
So we lost eight to $10,000 of savings, and probably in our budget, we don't have, we're going to have to adjust the budget now?
No, we do have a budget before we know what this is.
Okay, so that wasn't in the budget with the savings already?
No.
It was in the budget with our old price.
But I'll have to, I'll look at the budget.
No, but we're always trying to save a dollar here or there wherever we can, so we thought this could be a unique opportunity, you know, for eight to $10,000 is quite a bit of money, so...
Yeah.
We gave it a whirl, unfortunately, it just didn't work out. So before it drug on too much longer, I wanted to make sure that John came in and tried, I wasn't going to try and explain all this.
So now we're probably going to lose some money there, because we have to pay them for the two months that they were with, we were with them, and it's going to be a higher amount than it was with MML, so...
For the few months you were with Liberty, the rate would have been higher than anticipated, but it will be prorated as well. I didn't want to get too much into the weeds on the additional expense, but they're...
I mean, we need to know, these are the taxpayers' dollars that we're losing.
The way those Plan B policies are rated, and the reason that the rate went up so much when it got pushed to Plan B is because they think of Clay Township as a previously self-insured township.
I understand, the self-insured.
They have to retain a certain amount of your premium for claims, and we know if you had a previous claim, MML would have covered it. So essentially, what would have happened is they would have kept some of that premium for claims, we know that no claims would happen, and so eventually, and it could be next year or a few years down the road, they would issue a refund.
But we gave you $50,000 for, was that for how long?
Well, initially, that was the annual.
Okay, so we gave, and they wanted $40,000 more.
Correct.
So $50,000 was the annual, and that was going to be a savings. But now, so now, we're going to have to look at, we were with you for two months, so $90,000 was going to be the annual, so we're going to have to pay $8,000 a month for those two months, so that's $16,000 is going to be prorated out of our $50,000 that we gave you. And our cost with MML is $40,000 for the year?
I don't have, I don't have anything from MML yet.
It's based on our payroll.
It's based off of payrolls, they'd have to do a payroll audit. And to be clear, it's not John we gave the money to, it's Liberty Mutual.
Yeah.
It just sounds like we're out quite a bit, because we're going to pay...
Potentially, we could be, yes.
So after, after the new figure of about 90, if you divide that by 12, that's not your actual monthly bill, though, because some of that 90 was just be, was going to be held for claims. And so although it impacted your bottom line, eventually, you would have been refunded that, similar to a dividend. So, once it's all said and done, your prorated won't be the $8,000 a month, it will be lower than that.
Well, I just would have hoped you would have come in with those numbers for us, because of course, we're going to ask that question tonight.
Because they haven't finished their audit, we don't have the prorated figure. As soon as we get that done, I can, you know, obviously get all that information, and then they'll get that dividend distribution or that prorated refund to you.
This has been, this started in the beginning of, end of October, the beginning of November. I didn't want it dragging out, and four months later, have him come to the board and say, hey, by the way, six months ago, this is what happened. So does he have all the answers this evening? No, he doesn't, excuse me, but we wanted the whole board to know what was going on.
When do you anticipate the audit to be done?
So they had told me if they haven't reached out, that they will within the next week or two, depending on how quickly we can get them the information, which I think since we have it all from the quote, we should be able to get it to them fairly quickly. I would anticipate the first of the new year, you know, sometime in January, we can get that figure, and hopefully those checks sent. I wouldn't think it would drag on much, much later than that, but with the holidays coming up, I'm not sure, you know, if they'll get it done before the end of the year.
Any questions for John?
I have a question. Budget on the insurance last year?
I, it's spread out across all the departments for work comp, I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Because it's on payroll, and that varies.
Yes, based on payroll.
Okay, well, just wish we would have looked into all that, you know, if we knew what was happening.
I don't think it crossed by, you know, crossed up.
So what happens is the placement facility had quoted it as a traditional policy, which, again, we, from our eyes, you're not coming from a self-insured place.
Well, why wasn't anyone else notified that we weren't?
Once it went to Liberty Mutual, they do their own underwriting, and that's when it, through those different Michigan organizations, it was determined that it was supposed to be a Plan B policy. And so, again, the initial intent was that $47,000 or $50,000 figure, it was a few weeks, if not a month later, when Liberty finally came back with that Plan B figure, and that's when we had gone back and forth with them for a few weeks after that to try to have them change their decision. Unfortunately, we weren't able to...
So going down the road, this won't happen again?
Correct. Yeah, we will not be going that route if you even, you know, give us the opportunity to try again. to try again next year down the road. We think that with our new AccraSure partnership, we're gonna have some new markets available to us as well. But definitely, whatever we do in the future, we will avoid this situation for sure.
It's like booking a room on Priceline, you don't know what hotel it is until after you book it. So John, do you use, are you the brokerage firm or do you use a brokerage firm that finds Liberty?
We are the, the broker, the agent.
You are?
Yes, yeah. The, the portal is, is a system that most Michigan agents or brokerages are able to use when their primary markets don't have a, a market for it. So accident fund is generally our primary carrier. But due to the police and fire exposure, they have kind of gotten out of that, that industry. So normally, that would have been our, our go-to. And the reason that we had to go to the portal was because they, they are trying to get out of the business of insuring police and fire, so.
Gotcha. Last question, are you aware that, have we filed any claims against our workers comp during the period we were with Liberty?
No. When, when.
He said no, yeah.
When we placed you or when we assisted in placing you back with MML, they did request loss runs for the few months that you were with Liberty and those were, those were blank. Those were no losses during that time.
Okay, so it won't be quite as sticky?
Correct.
Yeah. Any other questions for John? Thanks a lot for coming in.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you, John.
Like I said, as soon as we get all of that audit done, we'll, we'll make sure you have that information as soon as we can. And in the meantime, if you do have any, you know, questions, I'm always available at the office, so.
Just disappointing, you know, that you couldn't have, that there wasn't a way to get that to us before we actually agreed to the quote, you know? But I know you have your processes you have to go through, I guess, so.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead. Thanks a lot, thanks for coming out. Okay, next, um, is our local fund, local road funding application through St. Clair County Road Commission for Fruit Road. And, um, we've ordered to resurface the road, Fruit Road, providing 1.35 millage for roads and ditches was passed. And the voters turned it down by 60 to 40%. And, um, so, for me to notify the St. Clair County Road Commission that we aren't, don't want to do this, we have to rescind the resolution.
The resolution states that it's.
Right.
Only if the millage passes, we just have to rescind the application.
Yeah, okay, right, you're right, rescind the application, so.
I'll make a motion to rescind the local road funding application with the St. Clair County Road Commission for Fruit Road.
Support. Okay, motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, I don't think we need a roll call, do we?
Oh, we probably should, it was a contract.
Yeah, it's always, it's a contract. Roll call, please.
Artie Bryson.
Uh, yes.
Maureen Borey.
Yes.
Mark Rashard.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Okay. I have a meeting up there tomorrow, I will let them know. Okay. Next, ambulance service agreement with TriHospital. I see we have Ken Cummings and Trish here. Excuse me. I mentioned to the board how upon the request, you know, I talked to MedStar and Richmond Lennox about providing ambulance service for us. Richmond Lennox, they, they, they didn't even want to really talk to us about it. I did give our, all our run data and everything to MedStar. And as you can see in the email that they replied to me at the vo, upon preview of the volume, they could not serve our community even with the share of a subsidy plus service So they weren't really going to give us a quote. And I, I tried to get additional ambulance services for the island at some point in time, like in the summer. And they just said, you know what, we're gonna lose money. I did meet with Ken and Trish a few times and, um, I did tell or ask them, I, I need something to, to show, give us some level of service or anything. I mean, I, I mean, I trust Ken and Trish, I know them well, they're friends. But, you know, five years from now, they might not be here. I might not be here. I need some assurance that, you know, Tri is at least gonna maintain their services that they're providing to us. And they did put in there that they will maintain ambulance, uh, a station in our township. Ken, you want to come up and, did that summarize everything?
It really well.
Okay.
Thanks, Artie. Good evening, everybody. What, what you have before you is an amendment to our existing contract with Clay Township. We've actually, TriHospital has been your provider of ambulance service really since the mid 1980s. So we've been serving your citizens for a very, very long time. We, as, as Artie mentioned, we do have a, a station located here, right within Clay Township, right next to the fire station. That station has worked out really well for us. We have no plans whatsoever to vacate that. We certainly hope to continue to, to serve the citizens of, of Clay Township from that location. In addition to that, we also have a second ambulance located 24 hours a day, seven days a week in Ira Township, which is one township over. And so we really utilize both of those ambulances in order to serve the citizens of Clay Township. The, the amendment that you have before you tonight is essentially an amendment to the existing contract. As I said, it only addresses the compensation section of the existing contract. And essentially, what that is for is when the voters approved the ambulance millage this past summer during the primary, that amendment essentially says, is an agreement between Clay Township and TriHospital as your provider, that you will agree to pass those funds on to us when you receive them. So it doesn't require any additional outlay of, of funds from the township at all. This is simply a pass-through as those funds are collected through the millage. Regarding additional coverage, you know, it, it is one of the things, and I had shared a, a great deal of numbers with Artie when I met with him a, a couple of weeks ago. But one of the challenges that we have is that, you know, we, we derive our revenues primarily off of charging users that use the service. We now are going to have access to these millage dollars as, as well. And the reason for that is, is like many businesses, the economy has hit us incredibly hard. And in order for us to just sustain the level of service that we currently provide to the citizens, not just of Clay Township, but all of St. Clair County, these millage dollars were necessary for us to be able to keep ambulance services at the current levels that they are right now. Rising costs, reduced reimbursements from payers is what's driving that. That combined with an incredible workforce shortage, which I don't think you, that's the first time you've probably heard that, trying to find staff to staff vehicles and, and our equipment is incredibly challenging right now, not just at TriHospital, but quite frankly, throughout all of Michigan and, and much of the, the United States right now. We plan to use these dollars to try to increase our wages for our staff so that we can recruit and, and retain staff, so that we can perhaps add additional ambulances. These funds, when we combine them for, with all of the funds collected throughout the county, we believe that there will, assuming we can find staff, that we will be able to increase and expand our coverage to all the communities. Will we put another ambulance in Clay Township? I can't promise you that right now. But one of the things that we certainly will, will, will look at very, very closely with Clay Township, as we have in the past, right now and for a number of years, whenever the ferry shuts down in the wintertime due to the ice blockage, we have committed and have maintained that commitment of putting an ambulance or, or a paramedic on the island during the duration of that shutdown. In addition to that, we also, during, during the summertimes and we have special events, we always have additional ambulances down here. One of the things that we're gonna look very, very closely at, I just can't promise it to you in writing right now until I know I've got sufficient staff. But we are going to look at putting an ambulance perhaps on the island during the summertime, as Artie had mentioned, during the, the, you know, perhaps the Friday, Saturday and Sunday area. We know that the volume increases and the demand increases in that area during the summer months. And we're hopeful that we can accommodate that. I know we've worked with the, the township and the fire department in, in locating at the fire station there in, in Harson's Island, that would help us a great deal so that we have to go out and secure additional facilities. But beyond that, the dollars, just even with the millage, the dollars on there, let me just give you a really quick number, a couple of numbers really quickly, so you understand what I'm dealing with. Based on the amount of ambulance volume that, that exists within Clay Township, these are 2021 numbers, I haven't done the 22 numbers yet, but, but they're a pretty accurate reflection of our, our revenues. Based on bad debts, contractual write-offs, contractual write-offs are the difference between what we charge and what insurance actually pays for the service. We generated about $325,000 in revenue in Clay Township in 2021. Right now, one ambulance, and you'll find this number is pretty consistent throughout most ambulance organizations, one ambulance, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, staffed and equipped, costs about $710,000 a year. So you can see that at $325,000 of net revenue compared to a cost of $710,000, we lost a lot of money in Clay Township last year and, or in 2021. How did we survive? We share this ambulance with other communities, the city of Algonac, Cotreville Township, even Ira Township when we get busy over there. By, by sharing that ambulance among multiple communities, it increases the revenue and reduces the cost for us. And so that's how we're able to survive. In addition to that, quite frankly, we have higher volume areas in the northern part of the county that help us to subsidize keeping the services down here at the levels that they're at right now. So in reality, many of the communities in, in, in other parts of the county that have higher call volumes are actually subsidizing us and the ability of, of us to have ambulance service down here at the level that we have. So putting another ambulance on the island is just cost prohibitive. I mean, it, it would cost us another $710,000 and the revenues simply are not there. It would, it would put a, a significant financial burden on, on our organization. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have, but we are certainly looking forward and hope to continue service with Clay Township.
Are you regulated by LARA?
Pardon me?
Are you regulated by LARA?
No, we are not. We are actually licensed through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. LARA no longer controls or oversees the licensure for EMS and, and health organizations like ours. So MBHHS is the one that actually.
Although I might consider parameters of the, that licensing with that health department. I'll go online and look.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, it's all, we're statutorily driven and the, the, what, what's required of us in terms of staffing requirements and things of that nature, it's a combination of the state law and, and the rules that go with that, as well as local medical control. So, so.
That was me.
Oh, sorry.
I kept a loose wire.
So, so they're, as mandated by the statute, the local jurisdiction is governed by a local medical control authority. But you'll read that, it's all in the statute, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So you, we share the ambulance with who? Algonac, Ira and who?
Well, Algonac, Ira, Cotreville, basically this general vicinity down here.
Okay, and how much do each of those, you know, are, we can, we, you collected 325,000 from us. What did you collect from Algonac, Ira and Cotreville?
I, I don't have Algonac's numbers with me right now or Ira's or Algonac's, but I can, what I, I think I shared with you, Artie, Ira and Alga, or, and Clay Township combined, give me one second, I, I actually might have.
Yeah, I got it. I saw.
I just, it, it's still at an operating deficit, unfortunately.
I mean, if it's 325,000 from us, I would imagine Algonac would be similar.
But we had a second truck, okay? So now, because I have the Ira ambulance, it's 710, $10,000 per year, per ambulance. So if you combine the cost of the Ira station and the Clay Township station, it's 710,000 times two, or 1.4 million dollars. So.
But if you're getting 325,000 from each of those communities.
Oh, we're not getting that much from everybody. That's just Clay. That is just Clay Township.
Because we're gonna, our funds are 250,000 we're getting, right?
About 250,000.
About 270,000.
Per year that you're gonna add and all these others are also gonna add.
So, so with your.
So I'd like to know those numbers.
Let him talk.
So with, with the rev, the service revenue, which I said was about 325, plus the, the millage, now I had to calculate because I have 2021 numbers, I haven't got the 22 numbers yet, but I had to calculate it, 258,000. It brings a total revenue, uh, uh, offsetting the cost at a deficit of 121,000 for us.
Well, 703,000, 325,000 plus 258,000 is 703,000, wait, 13,100.
Five, look, 500 and some thousand.
Yeah, but you have to add Ira and Cotreville and.
Right, but I also have to add another 708,000 in expense as well onto that. So you can see we're not losing. I can tell you, Ira Township generates 273,000, I'm sorry, 157,658 in Cotreville, 105,949.
And we don't know Algonac.
I don't have Algonac. What, I'm sorry, I do, 175,963.
Right.
You add all those up.
And they're all getting more money too.
Correct.
Hey, Ken?
Yeah.
Your, the, the service revenue, is that lower because of the, the money you can't, you bill but don't.
Correct, yeah. And, you know, unfortunately, because ambulance service, like most, pretty much all healthcare organizations, we're stuck getting, collecting what the payer decides to pay. I can charge $1,000 a run, but if Medicare only allows $325, that's what we get. The difference between the charge of $1,000 and what they actually pay us is called contractual write-off. We can never collect that from anybody. That is written off and never, just never to be seen again. So we're, we're pretty much stuck receiving what payers choose to pay for the service. We don't get to dictate that at all. No amb, no ambulance provider does.
So Artie, where is it that you said they added that they would maintain an ambulance in the township? Is it section H?
I think it's the last thing.
It was the last one.
I think it's the second to the last, Cindy, if, if you look.
Yes. So it just says that you're gonna maintain and operate in the township, but one day? Two days? Three days?
I don't know, 24/7.
We can't commit.
24/7, yeah.
What can we commit to that in that paragraph?
Let me find it really quickly. I think it was.
It's five years from now, when you're gone and you're gone and you're gone.
Yeah, it's number H.
Someone's gonna be like, oh yeah, we're just gonna be here one day now. And I'm gonna say, well, it says you're gonna maintain and operate and they'll be like, yeah, one day.
It's just, yeah, it doesn't say time.
Yeah, I, I have no problem. I mean, the intent behind that was that that ambulance would be there 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Can I amend that?
Yeah, yeah. In fact, if you'd like, Artie, I'd be happy to do that and send it back to you. But if you wanna, I mean, if you'd need to, if you wanted to approve it, you can certainly approve it with that amendment in it. I, I have no problem because that was clearly the intent. Yeah.
And then my, I guess my only other question is, if for some reason that we were to terminate this agreement, where are the provisions for how we're supposed to terminate it?
So that exists within the actual contract.
Right.
Okay? So this is just an amendment to the contract. So you have a clause within your contract itself, as, as do we, to terminate the agreement.
Right, so it's back to that for, for the termination.
Again, this is only addressing compensation, that's all.
Yep.
This is only an amendment to the compensation section.
So, I mean, but we're gonna commit to another four years, so I'd like to know what those parameters are if we want to.
Well, we're already committed with our other contract, that's what he just said.
We're committed until 2000.
All this does is say that the millage money for the next four years that the millage has passed for, we will commit to them.
This this amendment is just compensation, okay? That's all it is. It's amending the existing contract, which we entered with, entered with Clay Township in 2020. Now, the contract does have an expiration date, but that expiration date automatically renews every year so that we don't have to revisit it every single year, okay? So either party can terminate that agreement upon, I think it's 180 days notice if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, but the contract would just automatically renew because really nothing's changing within the contract itself. The only thing that's changing is the funding, because you don't currently provide any funding to us for service that we we provide. Now with the millage, you're gonna be receiving funds from the county. All this amendment is saying is that when you get that, you will provide those funds to us. That's it. It doesn't say any more than that. Or it doesn't change any more than that.
So I'm sorry, I'm trying to understand. So we have a contract with you, but it doesn't have a date, but it automatically renews once a year. We don't know when that is. What date, is that first of the year?
The the original contract was signed on the very front of this amendment. I believe it was in 2020, September 21st, 2020.
So September, so we have to let you know 180 days, which is six months in advance in order to cancel, but it's a.
But that's really for your protection, because say, I have the same obligation. You wouldn't want me to just call you tomorrow and say, we're gonna terminate service. You need time to find another provider, and so that's why that timeframe was put in there.
But the amendment just goes through 2025 because we're getting the millage funds until 25.
Correct. The millage was only voted out for four years, and so this only lasts during the duration of the millage. If the millage is renewed, then this would extend, okay? Or this would be renewed.
Past 25.
Correct.
But if we decide we want to cancel your contract, you're not still gonna get the millage dollars? Is that in there somewhere?
We're not your provider.
Okay.
So it it's entirely up to you. Again, this is not, this is just amending the compensation section. If you terminate the contract with us, we're no longer your provider, and you always have the right to direct the funds to your provider. And I think that's actually in the language here. I think it's actually in the language that the county provided to you as well.
We have the right to.
Direct those funds.
Direct the funds, keep them.
I I think you've, you already approved that one, too, didn't you?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I was really hoping we were gonna get all extra services, and I understand, I see what your situation you're in.
Yeah, I, and I, and again, I'm happy, I'll be happy to come back. I know we work, I mean, to put George on the spot here, but we work very closely with both Chief Coach and Chief Rose on a daily basis. You know, I meet with George once a month and go over any issues that.
They does an excellent job for us, they really do.
Yeah, I mean, our customer satisfaction scores are are very good down here. You know, the voters have been very supportive of us throughout the county. The millage, quite frankly, passed in every single precinct in the county. We did not have a single precinct in which the voters didn't support providing the additional funds for ambulance service here in the county. So, you know, we're very proud of our record, but, you know, we're all, we can always get better. I I I'm not, I'm not gonna stand here and say that we're perfect because we're not. And are there things we can do better? Absolutely. But we try to work with our communities, we try to communicate with our communities, and we try to to meet the needs of our communities to the best of our abilities within the resources that we have, so.
I've had some complaints about.
Boy, I wish you'd let us know what those are, because we need to, anytime you have a complaint, we're more than happy to address it. I know, I hope you don't mind me belaboring this, but there was some questions a few years ago about service on the island. Artie had approached me about a price for a dedicated ambulance. I'm not sure how it evolved, but there was a committee that was formed over there. We worked with that committee, providing data and information, and I'm gonna really paraphrase this if I can.
I saw it all, yeah.
But they basically said, we have, we have the best system, we have a good system, so there's no point in changing it. That was the ultimate recommendation.
This is not just on the island, it was off the island as well.
Okay.
People have reached out to me, so if you have a card or something or a number, I can.
I absolutely do.
I'll I'll reach out to you with those complaints.
Yeah, please do, because I'm, I am, we are very, oops, wrong card.
Back to our agenda, I'll make a motion to have authorized the supervisor to sign the First Amendment to the ambulance services agreement with the corrections made as to the intent in section H.
Very good. Is there a second? Support, a motion support, and it is with correction of the intent of section eight. Any more discussion?
I would like the motion to say that it's 24/7 service, not not just say that it's the correction, but I'd like the motion to be specific that it's continual service, not just with the correction.
You wanna correct your motion? You wanna amend your motion?
Isn't the intent, the, your, said your intent was 24/7?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what that statement is now.
Yep.
So if you get the contract with that in it, that was his intent, then please sign it. That's my motion. And we have support.
We have motion and support. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
No.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next, fire department, uniform rescue jackets. See you later, Ken, thanks for coming. See you, Trish.
Good evening. Requesting permission from the board to purchase some rescue jackets for the firefighters. This will aid for them when they're on emergency calls at night visibility wise, when they're out in the road or in the dark areas of some residents. And it all, it's also will be uniformed. Some of the guys have older jackets, some have personal jackets, which were not uniformed.
Right.
Are these a rescue jacket, it's not firefighting?
No, no, they're used for EMS, EMS calls.
Are they warm?
Yes, they're, they have a zip in, zip out lining. They're spring, winter and fall.
Do they fit over their bunker gear?
No, that would be.
Do they replace their, like bunker gear stays in the truck, and this one goes on?
Right, if they're going to a medical, like tonight, they could put that jacket on. It'll protect them from the elements, rain, the rain, like a rain jacket type.
It's a budget item, chief?
It's in, it comes out a capital L, we were talking about doing some remodeling in the fire station, and what we're gonna do is save some money on that. We were looking at not going with the offices and the bunk room like what we talked about. We're looking at the existing office that we have, making that into the bunk room for the the officer that's on duty.
How closely do they compare to bunker?
They're not, they don't meet the standard for firefighting.
This, this is for emergency, like medicals?
Medicals.
So this is for everything but going to a fire that you respond to?
Right.
I think we need something reflective, we don't want them out there with their regular jackets. I, this is.
I'll make a motion to approve Chief Rose's request for rescue jackets, amount of $3,800, coming from line 0206-000-971-00.
Support.
Motion and support, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Next, we have a request to reappoint for our board of review members. Bev Rose, Tom Sawyer, Debbie, Debbie Addy, Dave Burley and Jill Bozzi. They've all great attendance, they work well together and actually extremely well together.
Make a motion to reappoint the board of review members from January of '23 to January of '25 for Bev Rose, Tom Sawyer, Deborah Addy, Dave Burley and Jill Bozzi.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have resolution 2022, '23 to opt out of the 80/20 rule as a yearly thing. It was a state law that basically says that any municipality, all the employees have to pay 20% of the cost, and if we don't opt out of this, basically, we'd be in violation of every collective bargaining agreement and contract that we have with our employees. So every year, we vote to opt out.
How many years have we done this?
Since it started.
2011.
Long time ago.
Yeah, I'd say seven, eight years ago.
2011.
So why did the state make this law or this public, the Act 152, telling government they should pay 80/20?
It was passed by Governor Schneider.
What's that?
It said it was passed by Governor Schneider.
Yeah.
And nobody has repealed it, so.
Right, it, it was more for the state to charge their employees more, but how it was written down, it's all, all municipalities from the state level down.
If you read the resolution, it tells you why it was passed, and it tells you how we're able to get around it. Tells you when it all happened.
So when we're in bargaining, we'd have to talk about this, because we have in the contract that they don't have to pay 20%, right?
Well, they all pay, but but it's a negotiated amount, and it's not 20%, no.
All right, so what are they paying now?
It depends on what, who you're talking about.
So if it's the fire department, where they pay 10%?
We don't pay benefits for fire.
Oh, I mean, the police.
Police. It's different for all three bargaining units, it's a different amount.
What about the board or the people in the offices, the township offices? What, how much do you guys pay?
Everybody in the township pays either $30 per pay for a single plan, or they pay $60 per pay for a family plan.
So that's like 60 a month or 120 a month, right?
120 a month.
All right, and I mean, what percentage is that on the 80/20 rule?
Two.
2%. So that's just the township offices?
That is the entire township. Anybody that is a full-time employee that is eligible for benefits.
But not contract employee?
That is any employee that works for the township that is full-time and is able to receive benefits.
So the police is the same?
Is the same.
And you're saying we can't do it because everybody's got a contract? So we have a contract with you, with everybody in the offices?
Police, dispatch, office, command, DPW, all have their own contracts. And if you think that we're gonna be able to negotiate to get our 20% back, I'll put you on the negotiating team.
And they'll just say, we want 20% in pay.
So regardless.
Which involves payroll taxes and everything else.
Doesn't matter this year because the contract's already enforced, we're not negotiating them this year. So I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2022, '23 to opt out of the 80/20.
Support.
Motion support, any more discussion?
It's like we don't have a choice.
You got it.
You know, so it's, I don't know.
Roll call, please.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
I think something needs to be done in the budget next year, so I'll say yes for now.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes.
That's wrong.
Next, we have resolution 2022, 20, 2023, 2022, '24, the 2023 St. Clair County right-of-way permit. So this basically allows us to work in the county road right of way, and we do have our insurance that covers us that the county requests to.
It's the resolution number, but it's for the 2023 year.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution 2022, '24. St. Clair County Road Commission right-of-way permit for 2023, Clay Township.
Support.
I don't have my glasses with me.
Yeah, no, that's good.
And the rest of it.
Yep.
Got you.
That's good. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Like I say, this allows us to work, so the county will allow us to work in the, in the right of way if we gotta fix a water main or anything. No discussion? Roll call, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, that's all we have. Board member comments, Cindy?
I'm good.
Good. Mark?
I just want to congratulate Cindy on the fine job on the election. Hopefully, she continues on with it for the next decade.
Thanks, Mark.
And I want to thank Scoreboard for being, being involved with the community and donating a lot of their time and materials for that. Then we have a planning commission coming up this coming Wednesday. It is an open, or a public hearing on solar energy, recreation, and a few other things. That's it.
All right, Maureen?
I too want to say thanks to Chris and Nancy at Scoreboards and More, and thank Joanne for 40 years of service, and we're gonna be sorry that that she's leaving. I would also ask anybody, you know, I'm sure we're gonna get our, a lot of people, hopefully, who want to take her place. I'd like to also see your resumes, if you could pass them along, Artie, or you can send them to me. If you're, I haven't, would like to serve, my email's yellowmaureen@comcast.net. And yeah, congratulations, Cindy. That's amazing that we had that huge turnout. I don't know, nobody really talked about it, but it says the highest turnout midterm election in Michigan history. So diligent preparation, served honorably. And then just two other things, I'm, I'm a little disappointed in the resolution that, you know, I don't know, to me, maybe people on the board that it's affecting the patient, it's a conflict of interest to vote on it, but I'm sure, you know, it would have passed anyway, so I guess it's a mute point. I just.
What's a conflict of interest?
Well, I mean, you guys are voting that we opt out of it, so it it does affect your pay. You're pay, you're paying 2% of your healthcare costs when the state passed a law that you should be paying 20%, you know? That's how I'm, if I'm understanding it correctly, if I'm, if I don't, then I'm sorry. The only other thing I want to talk about is how sad I am about what happened in our township. We lost a life Saturday morning at 5:00. And as everyone knows, a gentleman unfamiliar with this area, supposedly still under investigation at 34 years old, did drive into the North Channel and die. I'm upset for their family, I want to offer our, my prayers and say that I'm very sorry that safety precautions weren't in place for something of this nature, because it's not the first time that a car has went into.
I want to warn you, it's under investigation.
I know it's under the investigation, I'm just apologizing. Maybe that's why you didn't mention it in your supervisor's report, but I still feel that I want to reach out to the family and just tell them that we're saddened that this happened, and, you know, I'll, I'm gonna be writing letters to the government on the half of the people that I've been, you know, they've been upset that this has happened, and hopefully, things in the future change.
Thank you. Chris?
Christmas is just 20 days away.
Tick tock. Tick tock.
Anybody that needs a last-minute gift, easycanvas.com, awesome. I'll put your picture on a canvas for you, it's cheap, it's 10 bucks. The Goodfellas are, uh, still accepting donations at the township offices. Remember that you can round up on your township, you alluded to that in your supervisor report. We also have a boot that the ladies maintain in the window of our front township offices, and if you're feeling generous, um, the Goodfellas is a great cause, and that money stays local, um, to help support families around the holidays. Thank you to Scoreboard &amp; More for the core board, um, got a look at that thing, and it looks great. Um, I also wanted to congratulate Cindy Valentine, her an outstanding letter of recognition from the Secretary of State, Ozlem Benslin. And lastly, I wanted to say and request that you keep Joanne shirking your thoughts and prayers. Uh, the girls' basketball state championship coach, the BT, the DPW employee, the fire department employee, the post office employee, and my friend will be sorely missed at this table.
Coach.
Coach.
Yep.
Hang in there, coach, be strong.
Thank you.
Uh, so we prepared our tax file for printing mid-November, so we've had quite a few calls now that the winter tax bills went out with people, um, who have had sales that occurred. So if you had a sale occur and you received a tax bill, uh, there's a whole process, even after you turn your paperwork in here, we're waiting for the county register of deed to notify the assessors that the deed has been changed into the new name, so that does take a little bit of time, but if you have any questions, go ahead and give the office a call.
Thank you. Um, I'd just like to mention too, everyone, it's Christmas time, be careful, don't overload your electrical circuits, um, and I know I like to daisy chain all my, my, uh, Christmas lights into one little outlet, I shouldn't do that so much, uh, that kinda thing, so just be careful, and, uh, it's all about family this time of year, so, and friends, keep an eye on your neighbors, uh, check if they're doing okay, especially when it gets colder out, and, um, give your friends and family a hug. That's all I have, thank you.